We now reconvene this meeting. At this point in time, we're going to be moving to item F, if the clerk would read.
F is a charter ordinance introduced by councilmembers Jeff Cohen, Toni Emerson, and Brandon Jensen concerning term limits of the mayor and councilmembers amending section A222 and repealing said original section.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. We discussed the term limit proposal from the Policy and Finance Committee during our October 10th Governing Body meeting. Prior to that time, term limits had not been considered by the governing body for almost a decade. The revisions proposed to Charter section A2-22 involve the addition of a new subsection which would impose term limits. It won't provide the same level of detail tonight as I did several weeks ago, but it's worth mentioning again that the committee's recommendation that the imposition of term limits not move forward unless approved by the voters during the November 2020 general election. If the governing body does not approve the proposed charter ordinance, no further action is needed. If the governing body approves the proposed charter ordinance, then steps will be taken to place the term limit issue on the November 2020 general election ballot. If approved by the voters during the November 2020 election, then term limits would be applied in January 2022 to individuals elected in November 2021. I hope that makes sense. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So basically, what we are hearing here is that we have the opportunity to allow the public to make a decision. At this point in time, a vote affirmative would allow the public to make a vote, and a vote for the negative would then in turn end the conversation. It would not be brought to the public, and the issue dies here. Do we have any questions at this point in time? We do have two individuals signed up to speak. The first one is Mr. Jim Riordan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. By the way, background, I guess I should tell you that I chaired a group called the Citizens Government Review Committee. And whether you... Some of you may not be aware that it's mandated in the charter ordinance that once every decade that the citizens group take up issues like you are considering tonight and making recommendations... Holding hearings and making recommendations in regard to those issues. It was my privilege to have served as the chairman of the committee, and I think probably it's because... And by the way, I mean, the committee had a committee of five. Any one of the five people could have very easily chaired the committee, and I think I was chosen mainly because it probably appeared that I couldn't hold a steady job. I overappeared about 20 years, and I've served in the city capacity as a city council member for 12 years. I was a staff member, if you will, for county officials when I served as Director of Legal Services for the Association of Counties, and also as Executive Director of the County and District Attorneys Association. And I was appointed by Governor Bill Graves to run one of the divisions of the Kansas Department of Administration. So I've kind of been around in full circle here, and I was kind of comparing notes with Mr. Dobler, who also has occupied situations of the same type, and I won't hold myself out to be able to do it with the ability that he has, but I have one up on him. I was actually also a lobbyist, so I've just done my whole thing. So I want to tell you a little bit about the... What we did. We had hearings, and basically what the goal is, is to have a hearing. We heard from about three dozen people altogether, including about 24 people from the public. We had two public hearings. We had 11 conferences in which we met with city leaders. We met with former mayors and current mayor. We met with former councilmembers and current councilmembers. We met with the public on three different occasions... Or two different occasions. And we met with former administrators. And we had heard also from the public, or from the... From all different groups of leadership, including the business community. And in fact, I think Mr. Dobler was representing the business community at that time of being a chair, the president of the Chamber of Commerce. And I know that a couple of you, Ms. Hiller, also sat in on that. So what I wanted to talk to you about tonight is not what we learned, and we learned a lot. And we came to several recommendations, two that are probably important to you. One is we recommended an increase in salaries, and it led to the salaries that I think it was the catalyst led to the salaries that you enjoy today, and much needed, by the way. It wasn't hard to sell that idea. And also the fact that...
Mr. Riordan, how much extra time would you need?
I'm sorry. Could you give me four more minutes and call it in?
We have a motion for approval by Councilman Jensen. We have a second by Councilman Dobler. We proceed by voting.
We have 10 yes.
10 having voted yes, the motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. I'll bring it to the close. What we did learn, however, is... And by the way, I have... I bought for you, and I'm going to leave it with the clerk, a report. We had a 30-page report and 20 pages of appendix. And I think if you haven't read it, I think you'll be impressed with the detail that these commissions go to, and we were the fourth one, by the way. But what I did was look back to see... And what I want to tell you is what we didn't find. And what we did find was that people were pretty darn happy with the city the way it operated, and with you in particular, with the council. What we didn't find was any mention, and not just in our hearings, but I went back and looked at the other hearings as well, not once did I hear or see the suggestion that we should have term limits in any other capacity but the councilmembers themselves bringing the idea up. What our research found, and we did some research, and I'll pass this... I'll share this with you quickly. This is our neighbors and other cities of this size, and whether they have term limits or not, you're going to find that of the six, only one does, Wichita. And you have to realize that Wichita also had a mayor for over 30 years, so the others don't. What we found was that from the website of the League of Cities, we found that only about 15% of the cities... Now, term limits are fairly common for states. 17 states have term limits, but for cities, only 15% of the cities have term limits, and as well as most of those are large cities. And in fact, of the 10 biggest cities, eight of those have term limits for councilmembers. But the major reason why the big cities have those is twofold. And also what we found is that term limits are solutions to problems. And so those cities have problems, and that's why they have term limits. And the two most common reasons why they have implemented them is simply abuse of power by incumbents who stay too long in the office, or they have nepotism, or patronage, things that we used to hear about, Pendergast machine of Kent City, and the dailies in Chicago. And the other is corruption. Term limits are seen as a solution to corruption such as bribery, extortion, embezzlement, and graft. And in all my experience, and I've been in this city for 50 years, and I've been involved in government for 20, I never saw... I never saw any of those actually take place. And there was never anyone who was indicted or brought to justice for that involvement. So what I want you to think about in my closing is that there are four main thoughts. First of all, term limits are solutions to problems, and in this case, they're solutions to problems you don't have. I believe what you have here is a solution in search of a problem. This document that I'm giving you is evidence that the public doesn't think you have a problem, and I believe that the fact that you selected Mr. Dobler is proof that you value experience and institutional knowledge. And the fact that I was here only five years ago, and only three of you are still here, tells me that it's pretty effective. The elections and the processes we have in place are very effective. So my suggestion is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter.
Well, by the way, Mr. Brew took my time.
So discussion from the body. Deputy... Deprimia.
I'm not sure who you talked to, but my constituents that talked to me did have a problem, and I'm not saying all of them. I'm saying some of them. And I know I've read the pros and cons. I've talked to you. I've heard your pros and cons. And honestly, I don't want to make this decision. I want the voters to make this decision. You know, then that leaves our own personal views out of it. You know, whether you've been here a long time or whether you haven't, I think we need to let them decide. I think it needs to go for a vote. Thank you.
Councilman Padilla.
If I could back up a little, and maybe I missed this somewhere along the line. And my colleagues here brought this to us. How did... How did the idea of term limits come to the committee? Was it... I'd like to know if it was from the general public or something during discussion?
Yeah, I can answer it, Mayor. I heard our mayor speak in front of a group of people and said, "Change in your leadership is good." And I said, "Now, why don't we have that?" And I just asked our staff, and they said, "Well, it's a policy thing, and you need to do it at the policy committee level," and that's where it started.
If I may, thank you. And the reason I ask is because, in a way, it came as a surprise to me because even though I get the emails that are critical of the council or the city as a whole, and we're not doing our job... Well, not for Mr. Lesser. They really feel, though, that as a group right now, we're working for the betterment of the city, and they feel confident in... For the people who have been elected to these positions, that they made the right choices. I've never really got specific criticism of any specific councilperson, you know, like Henderson isn't doing his job or whatever. I've never... I don't get that. And I can't remember who made the statement in one of the discussions we had in here, and I think it's accurate myself, and that is that I think the public has the ability to change its leadership right now. If they show up for the polls and vote me in or vote me out, they have spoken. And I think that's enough control, I guess, rather than adding a must-do. If Mr. Emerson's doing a fantastic job, he'd like to stay, his constituents would like him to stay, and there's no reason for him to leave, why force an effective leader out of that position unnecessarily? And I think it... I know it sounds like giving the voters a choice, but they have that choice now. All they have to do is register and go to the polls every time we have an election, and they make their choice known then. I don't think that making a "I have to get off a position" is necessary. If I don't do my job in the next couple of years, then you'll know that because I won't get elected again. And I think that's enough to allow our voting public to make the change of their leadership when they think it's ready. If they don't think it's ready, they're ready for a change in their specific leadership, then they'll vote me back in, and that goes for all of us here. And I think, I hate to use Mr. Cohen as an example, he does a great job. He does a really good job. But if people didn't get out to the vote... Voting booth and express their confidence in him and in enough numbers to keep him on the council, then that's the public responsibility. That's not ours to take away from them. It's not ours to say, "Well, you didn't do your job at the polls, so we're going to help you out by making it necessary for us to move people off the council." So that's my opinion. I think it's an unnecessary step. I think the public knows what they want sometimes. Sometimes they think it over for a while and then come back with another idea, but at least they have the chance to vote right now to change their leadership. I agree with you, Ms. and Madam Mayor. Change is good. Leadership needs to have the influx of new ideas and perspectives, but that will come by those people who decide to step forward and choose to run for office. So that's just my two cents.
I will say that I made these statements before, and I recently had a conversation with somebody, and they were telling me how automatically an incumbent has an advantage and... Because of the name recognition. And in the incumbent having the advantage because of the name recognition, even though people may not think that that's the case, many times it dissuades people that could be a good candidate from even throwing their hat in the ring because they think, "Well, this person has been here for such a long time." And I'm not saying that we should make that decision for the public. All I'm agreeing with is the fact that I think that we owe it to the public to give them the opportunity to make their decision. I personally cannot be the individual that says, "I know exactly what every single citizen in the city of Topeka that votes wants, and I think that the city of Topeka wants us to be here for as long as we want to be here because we know that everybody will come out and vote or not vote for somebody." I think that this is just providing the opportunity for our population that does go out to vote to let us know if they would like to see this enacted. If they don't want to see it happen, what they're going to do is that they're going to vote, "Nope, no term limits. We're happy with what's happening." I think that another thing that we could be discussing is that if in the ordinance... I don't recall if we have a write-in option, that if somebody wants to have a break after two years, up to two terms, I'm sorry, that they could have a write-in campaign or something like that. But again, it's just about going back to the people and giving them the ability to choose on how they want their government to work, and I trust our people to make that choice. So additional comments or questions on this issue? Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to correct Mr. Riordan. I do remember... I do remember that team that got together, and they did impose that we get a raise, and we did. It went from $250 to $500. So it's not the raise that we have now. It's the raise that we had before now. So I just wanted to make that clear because I thought that they... I forgot about that. They did a magnificent job of going out there and talking to everybody, everybody. I was reading the ordinance, and it said, "After so many years that you could come back." So if we're imposing... That didn't make a lot of sense to me. If we're imposing a term limit, why would you give them a break to come back? You know, that just didn't make a lot of sense. But this week, I've had a lot of people ask me why we can't get more busier on doing crime, why we can't get busier on getting these... We're almost there with the potholes, not there. But they're like, "You guys have more important things to do." And they used Mr. Cohen as an example of, you know, that 13 votes, you know. You know? So for me, the incumbent, I feel like I have to work even harder to keep my position and get out there and work, you know, even harder to keep my position, not just by name recognition, but because I've sat here for a while. And so I feel like when you get out there, you know, every time I'm out there, I'm like, "It's got to be... I gotta get one more vote, one more vote, one more vote." Now, your people went to the polls. They went to the polls. It's hard to get people to go to the polls, and I commend you for that. But always in your heart and in your mind, when you're out there in that race, you're thinking, "One more vote, one more vote." And I was really shocked because you guys got to go campaign all in the summer and in the nice weather. When I campaigned the last time, it was cold and snow. And people look at, "How hard are you going to work for them?" And they look at, "How hard are you going to continue to work for them?" I've had people say, "If you didn't come ask me for a vote, I'm not voting for you." So again, I do agree with Mr. Padilla. I'd come down there and give you a hug, Mr. Padilla, but, you know, there's this thing that we can't hug in the chambers. You've corrected me and said, "We're not in the chambers," but it was really, really nicely put, and I agree. I'd like to put this to rest. If not, I'll agree to put it to a vote for the people. But I've had people say, "We don't even need to waste our time." Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. At the risk... Since I was on the losing end of the last hot topic, I said what my position was last time, so I don't know that I need to repeat it. I appreciate Councilman Padilla's comments. I too... I'm concerned that because there has not been a public initiative about this, you know, the message if we vote this forward says that the council thinks there's something wrong. The council... And this is... It might seem like a kind of benign issue right now, but I think of a couple things. For one thing, if this council would vote it through, it's the 2020 council, three of whom are not even here yet, that will have to carry that issue and all the back and forth with the public. And it might seem that's kind of benign, but we don't know how it would evolve. The issue of term limits and people's service and quality of government is a big deal to people, and so what it's doing is putting that issue out, making that a primary topic for next summer and fall. This council choosing to put that out. And without having talked to her about it, what one of the things to Councilwoman Ortiz, what the public is asking for is to see us clean up and beautify the city and to see if we can work smarter on streets and utilities, to put an attitude and activities and amenities in place that will attract and keep people here and make businesses want to grow here, the kinds of things we talked about earlier. And I guess to me, if we want to put an extra issue on the table as a work project for ourselves and the citizens, we should pick one of those things that the citizens have raised as a priority. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen.
So I just have a quick question. When would this need to be approved in order to put it on the ballot?
I don't know for sure, Councilmember Jensen, what the certification deadlines are, but I think it's eight to 12 weeks ahead of the vote, which would be November of 2020.
So if we were to defer this to the next council, which I would argue is probably a prudent decision, given that I agree with Councilwoman Hiller that they would have to discuss that, then there would still be plenty of time for them to have a discussion and vote on it before we need to go on the ballot.
Yes, yes.
Motion to defer to January 22nd, or 21st, rather, sorry.
Give him a microphone.
Okay, all right. I'm fine with that.
So I would move to defer then to February 18th. I just can't make you happy, can I?
Is there a second to this motion?
No, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have additional comments at this point? Councilwoman... Deputy Mayor, clear.
How long has your committee worked on this? A long time. I do not want to defer. I think the committee has worked on it. The committee's come to their, you know, their decision. We need to follow that. Huh? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry for interrupting. We've already learned that a lot of our committee decisions don't seem to matter anyway, so I'd say, "Let's vote on this and see how this falls."
Yeah, I don't think we should. The committee's done their work, and we need to go forward with that.
So at this point in time, we have a motion and a second, and the second was Councilwoman Padilla. So this vote would be to defer. So a vote yes would defer this, a vote no would push it back to, again, to having the issue on the table today.
Say that again.
A vote for yes would move this item to February 18. A vote no would bring it back to us right now to keep discussing.
Ms. Sullivan. So it looks like we have six no's, so the motion fails. We have Hiller, clear, Emerson, Cohen, Lesser, and the mayor voting no.
So at this point, the item is still back on the table, which... Thank you for trying. Which means that we would then vote either in favor of the motion of putting this up to a vote for the public, or the second thing would be... Oh, we don't have a motion. We have a motion by Chair Cohen. We have a second by Councilman Lesser. So at this point, we have a motion and a second, and that motion would be to accept the recommendation of the committee by saying, "Yes, what you're doing is that you're saying that you would like for this to go back to the people, to make a determination." A vote no would mean that you're not sending it to the people, that what you're doing is that you're saying, "No, this is not an issue," and it dies here.
It takes how many votes to pass?
Seven. Saying no further questions or comments? Yes. Deputy Mayor.
And it goes back to what Jeff said. We...
Councilman Cohen.
We disrespect our committees, and I think... I think we need to respect what they do. We send it to them. We expect them to make the decision, and it's kind of what we do with staff. "Okay, staff, let's do this. No, we don't want that." I just want to say, "Think about that when you're voting."
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, I'm going to say this. I don't disrespect your committee. I thank you for what you've done. I just have a different opinion, and that's part of government. And to staff, that staff job is... Job is to bring us items? That doesn't mean we have to approve them. That means they've spelled out a task to bring us that item on that task. What we're to do is look at it and see if we agree with it. That's their job, not for us to rubber stamp everything, and that's how I kind of look at it. I'll be bringing something forward. You might... You guys might not even like it. We've been in there a long time, but that's part of it. We've been, we've been in, in there a long time, but that's part of it, that's just part of it.
Councilwoman Padilla.
Yeah, I would have to agree with Councilwoman Ortiz. There's no disrespect intended. In fact, the offer to defer was made by one of the committee members. So there's that opportunity to have, um, differing views and looking at it a different way. Again, no disrespect intended, but that doesn't mean that I lose my opinion and lose my vote. So I appreciate your efforts, but I won't support it.
Saying no further comments or questions at this point in time, we proceed with the vote.
Okay, the motion fails. We have five yes and five no. The no votes are Hiller, Ortiz, Emerson, Padilla, and Dobler.
All right, we move on to the non-action items. Item A is a clerket read.
Okay, six A is discussion of proposed utility rate increases.
City Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we formally begin the discussion with the governing body regarding our quest to raise, utility raise, to allow the city to continue our capital improvement program and to do repair and rehabilitation work that's needed in our utility systems. At this time, I'd like to introduce Braxton Copley, who's come to the podium. He'll have a few comments before he turns it over for us to hear a presentation from Black and Beach regarding the rate study that they conducted. Braxton.
Good evening, governing body. Thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion with you and to lay out the information and our, and our thoughts on this. So basically, between Anna White and myself, we're going to cover three major areas. One, the first is just general presentation of what we're doing, some background information in terms of where we've been and where we are, and then getting more into the rate study process and results. So overall, our goal is to provide you with background information, present the results of our rate study, respond to your questions, and attempt to gain, have you gain an understanding of what the rate proposal is and why we're making it. So back in 2012, the city engaged a consultant that did a rate study. Ultimately, that rate study was rejected by the governing body and a compromised position of a 655 across the board for all three utilities was adopted, and that covered the years 15, 16, and 17. The tail end of 2017, again, a 655 across the board rate proposal was presented and was approved by the governing body. And the third and final year of that will be the 5% in 2020. Um, as I have repeated many times, my goal is to have the utilities become a data-driven organization and to just come and basically proffer a rate increase of 655 or any amount without having the facts supporting it in terms of what we need, what the financial needs of the utility are, and what should be the rates to me is not being responsible. So we reached out to, and put an RFP out on the street, and ultimately selected Black and Beach from amongst a number of very well-qualified consultants to basically do the math for us, to do the science, look at the facts, and come back to us with a proposal of what we need in order to responsibly finance our utility. And so one of the things that we came up with was a longer-term financial plan. So basically, a five-year rate proposal as opposed to a two- or three-year rate proposal. And with that, I will hand it over to Anna White to basically go through and explain the rate study process and our recommendations.
Thank you. Good evening. I will try to not keep us here any longer than we really need to be, but I want to make sure that I answer any questions that you may have regarding this process. So if we talk about, just a little bit about what a cost-to-service rate study is, it's basically three-fold. The first thing that we're doing is we're determining how much revenue each of the utilities individually need to recover from the rates. The second step is we're allocating those costs to the customer classes. This is the cost-of-service analysis part of the study. And then based on those results, we design rate structures that will recover the amount of revenue necessary to fund the revenue requirements. We'll take into account the difference in the customer classes and how they use the system. So I have been doing this for over 20 years, and as I've been working with communities across the country, we're kind of hearing the same thing over and over again. There's a lot of pressure to keep the rates as low as, as we possibly can, I understand that. But working against that is we have decreasing revenues due to a decrease in water consumption. That's across the nation, we're seeing that, you know, we've been seeing that for the last 10 years or more. And then we also have increasing costs due to rising infrastructure needs. So in order to kind of balance these opposing pressures that the utilities are all facing, we kind of have these four rate-setting best practices that we try to include in every study that we do. The first one is to set financial performance standards that will support financial resiliency. So an example of this here at the city of Topeka is the operating reserve that each of the utilities need to maintain. This is an example of making sure that there's enough cash on hand in case that there's an emergency, and that'll help keep the utility, um, up and operating should an emergency occur. The second one is to develop a multi-year financial plan on a regular basis. So the city already does develop an annual five-to-10-year financial plan as part of the capital improvement, improvement plan process. So that's a practice that's already in place here. The third one is perform a cost-of-service analysis every three to five years to kind of gauge how the customers, how the cost by customer class kind of align with revenue. Again, the city has a, a history of engaging consultants to do this type of work, so that's a practice that's in place here. And then the last one is to establish rates such that each utility meets the performance standards on an individual basis. So that's really kind of what we're stressing tonight, is not doing just across-the-board increases consistent for, same amount for each of the utilities, but looking at them individually and the increases that each utility needs. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the process and the methodology that we use, and then we'll look at kind of the results of the study. So there's basically three steps that we follow. It kind of goes along with the three reasons to do this type of a study. The first one is revenue requirements. We need to determine how much revenue each of the utilities need to recover from the rates in order to meet the revenue requirements. The second one is allocating those costs to the customer classes, and then finally, designing the rate schedules in order to recover those costs appropriately. So this graphic highlights in detail each of the steps that we perform for this type of a study. The reason why I show you this is that you can see that it is an orderly and a systematic process that we use. There are three manuals that provide guidance for these types of studies. There's one for each utility, water, wastewater, stormwater. The methodology that we follow, what's laid out here, is consistent with the guidelines in those manuals. So when we start with the first step, which is financial planning, the objective of the financial planning task is to develop a cash, a cash flow pro forma for each of the utilities to determine how to fund both the operating costs and the capital costs associated with the utility, and determine what the necessary revenue adjustment needs to be for the next three to five years. So basically comparing how much revenue you're going to receive from your existing rates, how much revenue do you need, what that gap is, and what do we do to close that gap? So what's the level of revenue increases necessary to close that gap between those two numbers? So some of the things that we take into consideration is how much revenue, the existing revenue, the rates will generate. What's the operating and the capital needs of the utility? When we talk about capital, we're talking about cash financing of capital outlay and a portion of major capital and renewal and replacement costs, and we're also talking about debt service associated with any debt finance projects. We also want to take into consideration any reserves, such as the operating reserve, and any other financial metrics that need to be met, such as coverage for the outstanding revenue bonds. And then finally, we determine what that necessary level of revenue adjustment is. So one of the key steps during this phase that was very specific for this project for the city was the development of an asset management schedule for each of the three utilities. So what this does was determine the annual level of investment necessary for renewal and replacement of the existing assets based on the age of those assets and the estimated replacement costs. So I'm going to walk you through just an example of what I'm talking about here. We're going to talk about water mains. So when we talk about just the assets in general, of course, we have the broad assets, water, wastewater, stormwater, those categories. If we look more closely into the water category, we have water mains, we have pumping stations, we have storage tanks, we have the treatment plant. There's a lot of categories within there. So we're going to talk about just the water mains. So the expected useful life for the water main is 100 years. So the replacement rate would be 1%. So if we want to make sure that we touch every single main within its useful life, we need to touch 1% of them every single year. The total replacement cost for all of the mains currently in the water system today is about 800 million, 890 million dollars. So if we need to touch 1% of those every year, that's 8.9 million dollars a year, just to give you an idea what we're talking about. So we created an asset replacement model for the city, and the city then used it to create these three scenarios. So the first one is called the status quo scenario. And this basically reflects a continuation of the 655 revenue increases that have been in place in the past, and the annual amount that the city has been able to fund renewal and replacement based on those revenue increases. So under the status quo, if we go back to the water mains, what this scenario would allow is about $4 million a year, or about a half percent of each of those water mains being looked at each year. And again, the, the industry standard is the 1%. So if we go to the other end of the spectrum, we have the ideal, and this does reflect the industry standard. So this would reflect, um, investing 8.9 million dollars each year just in the water mains. It would also reflect addressing upfront all of the deferred maintenance for all of the mains that are at their end of their useful life. So it's doing twofold, it's bringing kind of everything up to the same standard, and then continuing that going forward at the industry best practice level. So the idea was then to find something in the middle, some kind of a compromise. So this is the middle scenario. So basically, what this reflects is, um, increasing the level of investment that's needed in the system, but trying to balance that with revenue increases that are also tolerable. When you look at the ideal scenario, it was coming in with double-digit increases. So looking at something in the middle there with return, with regards to increasing the investment in the assets from the status quo, but also bringing down the rate increases from the ideal. So then, this is just a summary of the total spending for both major capital and renewal and replacement over the study period under the three different scenarios. So as you can see, major CIP is the same each year, regardless of which scenario we're looking at. But you can see how the level of renewal and replacements increases as you move from the status quo to the middle, to the ideal. So the proposed rates that we've developed are based on the middle scenario. Again, because this really reflects, you know, a balance between being fiscally responsible when it comes to the rate increases, it still allows for an increase in the level of funding and investment. Okay, so now we're going to kind of turn our attention to some results from the study. So this graphic is based on the pro forma that we developed for the water utility. So the bars on this chart reflect the revenue requirements. So we have the categories of operation and maintenance expense, cash financing, which is again cash financing of capital outlay as well as major capital and renewal and replacements, and then debt service on existing debt as well as proposed debt that would help fund some of the major capital and renewal and replacement. One of the goals in our financial plan is to work up to cash financing at least 25% of the new, renewal and replacement program by the end of the study period. So what this graphic shows is that the revenue under existing rates, which is kind of the purple line on this chart, will not fund the revenue requirements starting in 2021. So the revenue increases that are shown along the top of the chart, the revenue under those proposed revenue increases is that black line, which shows that it will fund the revenue requirements. One of the things that you might notice on here is that when we get out to the later years, like 2024 and 2025, that black line, it covers the revenue requirements, but it also is a little bit above that. And basically, what we're doing there is we're increasing the amount of cash in the operating reserve with these rate increases. And we're going to talk more about that in just a minute. So then we look at the same thing for the wastewater utility. And again, you can see with that purple line, starting really in 2022, revenue under existing rates does not recover the revenue requirements. With those proposed revenue increases, with the, the black line, it does. And then the same thing for stormwater, the same results. So when we look at this on a combined basis, these are what the combined revenue increases look like. And I think it's kind of interesting that they're all around 5% and 6%, which has historically been what the, what the utilities have been having in terms of revenue increases for the last six years. So all we're really doing at this point is just kind of fine-tuning that to be specific for each utility, to address each utility's individual needs in terms of the revenue increases. So when you look at it, though, on the combined basis, again, you can see that when we get out to 2024, 2025, our revenue under existing rates, again, is a little bit higher than our revenue requirements because we're building up the balance in the operating reserve. So let's look at the operating reserve a little more closely. So the city's financial policy is for the utilities to maintain an operating reserve equal to 180 days of operation and maintenance expense. Based on the estimated level of future debt financing and the frequency which with the utilities are expected to issue revenue bonds, the finance department has set a goal of 300 days of operation and maintenance expenses in that reserve. So there's two things that I want to point out on this graphic. The first one is currently, all of the utilities are above that 180-day minimum. You can see that here in, just in the first couple of years. But you will notice that it varies kind of significantly between the different utilities. So the wastewater utility is the green line that is way up at the top. The gray line and the blue line is water and stormwater. So you can see that even with these proposed revenue increases, coverage, or the, the number of days of cash on hand for water and stormwater are still right down there at the minimum. So it takes a few years to get these revenue increases in place, to get the extra revenue to start coming in, to eventually get out here to the second thing that I want you to notice, is by the end of the study period, all three of the utilities are much closer to that 300-day level. So obviously, on a combined basis, we're at the 300 level, but even individually, they're all much closer to that requirement. So this graphic then just shows the impact on the days of cash on hand with no revenue increases. So basically, on a combined basis, by 2022, we're below the 185 minimum requirement. For water and stormwater, it's as early as 2021, and we're below that requirement. So the days of cash on hand isn't the only metric that the utilities need to meet. The other one is debt service coverage. So there's three different coverage tests that the utilities need to meet. The first two are annual tests. So there's an annual test for revenue bonds. It says that annual net revenue has to be 1.25 times, uh, debt service, annual debt service. Now, the same test for the state loans, SRF loans, that requirement, though, is 1.1 times. The other test is an additional bonds test. So if the utilities want to issue additional revenue bonds, which is... So if the utilities want to issue additional revenue bonds, which is proposed during the study period, net revenue needs to be 1.25 times the maximum annual debt service. So we're just going to talk about just the annual debt service coverage for revenue bonds, just to show you what's going on here. So as I stated, the test is that the net revenue needs to be 1.25 times annual debt service. So that's what the black line here represents. So you can see that even with the proposed revenue increases, we are still for wastewater and water down here, right near that minimum. Stormwater is very high, but it is coming down. So the goal, the target that we set with regards to coverage requirements is to maintain a cushion of at least 20 basis points. And so we don't really get that cushion until we're out here in '24 and '25, '26, when we're really above that minimum requirement of 1.25. So then this is what it looks like with no increases. So this is a little more alarming, because this is as early as, especially on a combined basis, as early as 2021, we're not meeting that minimum requirement. The utility generally issues combined bonds for all three utilities, or at least for water and sewer, and therefore, coverage is usually looked at on a combined basis. The goal is to have each utility be self-sufficient. But if we're looking at that combined coverage, out in 2021, it would not be met. You know, what this means basically is that the utility would be in technical default, still making debt service payments, but not being in coverage. It would be a breach of the existing bond covenants, and would make it very difficult, if not impossible, to issue future debt, as long as this was the situation. So kind of three important points that I'm trying to make with all of these graphics is the rate adjustments that we are proposing is really to do three things. It's to fund the annual revenue requirements, it's to maintain at least 300 days of cash in the operating reserve, and then maintain at least a 20-basis-point cushion on the coverage test, each of those on an individual basis. And I just want to point out, because I think it can be a little confusing sometimes when you look at these different metrics, there's a difference between cash on hand and annual revenue. So a utility can have 300, 400 days of cash on hand and not meet the bond covenant, because it's not generating enough revenue. And we kind of see that with wastewater, right? We saw that the wastewater days of cash on hand is fairly high, but the coverage is not. So it's not just a matter of meeting one metric and not the other, it has to be all of them. So once we've determined what the amount of revenue is that each utility needs to generate to fund those revenue requirements, and we've performed our cost of service analysis, the next step is rate design. So while the cost of service is one of the factors that we take into consideration when we look at the rates, there's also some other principles that we want to consider as well. So for example, if we look at this list, one of them on there is revenue stability. So both the water and the wastewater utilities have a base charge that varies by meter size. So this is the part of the rate component that helps to promote revenue stability. You know, you're going to get that revenue every month, just based on that base charge. Another really important one is recognizing customer usage patterns and demands. So if you look at your existing water rate structure, you have a volume charge that varies by customer class. The purpose of this is to recognize that there is a difference between how residential, commercial, and industrial customers use the system, and the demands that they place on that system, and your rates recognize that. Another example is the fact that you have different rates for your wholesale customers. Again, they use the system differently, they receive different service from the utility than the retail customers, the rates reflect that. On the wastewater side, you have the surcharges for excess BOD and suspended solids. Again, that's to recognize that industrial customers use the system a little bit differently. So after taking into account the results of the cost of service analysis, evaluating your existing rate structure against these other principles that we want to look at, the proposed rates reflect continuation of across-the-board increases with no changes to the rate structure. So the next three slides reflect the proposed rates that are reflected in the ordinance that you may have already seen. And again, this is based on the middle scenario with regards to the renewal and replacement plan, and reflects across-the-board increases. So we have the one for water, wastewater, and stormwater. We're showing just inside-city on these, just because of the space. Properties outside the city limits are still 1.7x inside-city, and then we have stormwater. This table summarizes just some typical residential bills for customers that have water, wastewater, and stormwater service. So a customer that uses about 1,500 gallons would see an increase. If you look at it over the five-year period, the total combined bill, the average increase comes out to be about $2.99 per year. If you look at it for the 5,000 gallons, which what I calculated is the average single-family residential customer in Topeka uses is about 4,500. So 5,000 is a little above that. Again, if you look on the combined basis, the average increase per year is about $5.13. Okay, and then the last thing that we did was do some bill comparisons with 15 other communities. So the group reflects some local communities, other capital cities, and some communities that have similar populations. So as I kind of flip through these, I think what I want you to notice is that this is just the proposed rates for 2021, is that the proposed rates for each of the utilities really doesn't stand out from the group. So this is for the small residential customer. And again, we have water, sewer, and then we have it on a combined basis. We have then the larger residential at 5,000 gallons. Then we look at a commercial, small commercial. We look at an industrial, and then we look at a large industrial. And so, you know, especially on the combined basis, when you look at those, you know, the orange bars that reflect Topeka is generally right in the middle of the pack there. And then the last one that we have then is looking at stormwater. Stormwater can be a little bit more difficult to benchmark against. So we tried to note some of the differences, differences in some of these communities. So for instance, Olathe, Kansas, the stormwater fee is based on gross area. For all of the others, as it is here in Topeka, it's based on impervious area. So just something to note. Overland Park, and really any community that's in Johnson County, does receive funding for their stormwater program through an ad valorem tax. None of the other communities on this list receive funding from tax. So one other thing that I want to point out with regards to stormwater is that in the city of Topeka, for any property that does construct some type of a best-management-practice structure onto their property that helps control either the quality or the quantity of that stormwater runoff, can receive up to a 40% credit. Some of the other communities that are on this list also have a similar type of program, but that is something to keep in mind as you look at the proposed rates and the typical So that is the end of the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thanks. Can you give an example of what you just said? Is it like, you know, like some houses have the runoff that goes into a big, old container? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's really more maybe on a, looking at non-residential parcels that maybe put in like some type of a detention basin or retention pond, where, you know, it's a structure that's going to, during a really heavy rainstorm, capture that stormwater and hold it there until the storm subsides, and then it slowly releases it into the system, just so you don't have that sudden rush of the stormwater coming into the system at one time that can result in floodings. So, you know, it might be a case, and I'm sorry that I don't know the particulars of the credit program, but it might be a case where residential properties can also apply for the credit as well. But typically, it's aimed more for non-residential properties.
Braxton's ready to come. Deputy Mayor? Actually, Braxton.
Can I just offer a point of clarification on the discount that's available? That would apply to commercial properties, not to single-family residential properties. So I didn't want there to be a misunderstanding in the community on that.
Oh, no, we don't need a misunderstanding.
And it would be a, it would be a commercial property. And just to simplify it, if your property can handle and detain onsite a 100-year rain event, as well as to limit the discharge to the predeveloped two-year rain event, then you would be entitled for that maximum 40% credit.
Can you come and check my property, Braxton? I'd like to see if I qualify.
Single-family residential properties would not.
Well, we might re-label it here.
Deputy Mayor?
My sister lives in Olathe, so I told her to send me her water bill. And their price, her bill is actually less than mine right now. So I'd kind of be interested in knowing why that difference. But besides that point, can you tell me, or maybe, Braxton, or somebody, before the last six years, what was the rate of increases before the last six years?
Ask Neil.
We can do the research on that and then provide that to the city manager to distribute in terms of what the prior history, prior to 2015.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that. All right, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I want to, I think all of us have been getting a lot of challenges, either jointly or individually, or at the grocery store, or whatever it is. You know, I don't want my rates to go up. I have been giving an answer that I think is true, so let me run it by you. I don't think, you know, I don't think we've had the two, three-year increases, and I don't think there's been any for a while before then, but we similarly, Braxton can check, I'm sure, similarly, as we all know, we were dealing with deteriorated streets, with potholes, and so on, that there'd been this multi-year history of trying to save money and not reinvesting in long-term replacement and maintenance. And so what I've said to people is that Topeka, and this has been my, I've been on the council for 10 years, so this is what I understand, I've been told as well, is that Topeka, just like almost every city in the United States, is having to, for the first time, that cities forever budgeted for their operating expenses and utilities for their operating expenses, and for routine maintenance, and for some emergencies, and some preventive maintenance, and then they would bond to go expanding as the cities grew, but nobody ever budgeted to replace the whole system underground. And that the reason these increases are coming is because we, like everybody else, are needing to spend again on that original system that is now 50 to 100 years old. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I, because I think we need for our taxpayers to be able to explain in simple terms why all of a sudden we're having rate increases and we didn't before. So I want to make sure from your assessment that that's a reasonable way to explain it.
That is. I mean, if you look at the ideal versus the middle on this table, that is not up, but what you see is there's a huge increase when you go to the ideal, mainly because part of that, in the first few years, is playing catch-up for all the deferred maintenance that hasn't been done. And so there's a big catch-up period, and then it's maintaining that. And so, you know, I kind of want to point out that Topeka is being very proactive to put in a long-term plan to address this issue, and especially the development of the asset replacement model that we created specifically for the city. It's a great tool that the city is going to be able to use to update as more data becomes available, and use it to keep an eye on what that level of investment should be, and how much is being invested. We don't have very many clients, I mean, probably less than I can count on one hand, that have a tool like this that use it. So it's a great step for the city to start tracking what this investment level needs to be, and putting in the plan to fund it.
Thank you. I just, maybe other people have been saying about the same thing. This is helpful for us as backstory, and to be able to help give people how many dollars it is, instead of what the percent is, because the percents just are overwhelming, but the dollars, last time we did this, we went through that as well, the dollars make it a little easier to make it real. And similarly, people see the construction happening all the time, and they get that, but most of the feedback to us is, well, why is that sitting there for seven days and nobody's there? And, you know, why? All those kinds of questions. And so trying to simplify our message about why this is important is helpful.
And you're also seeing it just because of the age of the assets. You know, mains that are 100 years old, we're at the point now where they're all 90, you know, they have 100-year useful life, they're all 90 years old now. So they are all falling apart. It's just, it's just a matter of, you know, just due to the age and to the lack of the maintenance of those mains.
Well, and sometimes people talk about the old water utility, when it was the commissioned form of government, and how come it was all fine back then? And I've just said, you know, everything that they were building back then is 50 years old, the pump stations and so on that we're replacing now. Okay, thank you.
So my question to you is, you said that you have the ideal, and then the moderate. And if memory serves me right from your presentation, you stated that the ideal was a 1%, which was close to $890 million total dollars in order for us to get the total 100-year replacement process going on.
Correct.
What does the moderate that you're presenting to the public drop us to?
Yeah, so just with respect to the water mains, what the moderate was, was funding about $6 million a year, which is about 0.67%. So we have 0.5 at the bottom, 1 at the top, 0.65 in the middle. So again, just trying to bring the two sides together into something that is reasonable.
It sounds very similar to our PCI, just saying.
You're right.
Councilman Jensen, to be followed by the expert in the matter, Councilman Dobler.
I would yield to the ranking expert.
This'll be fun.
I don't know how to go first in front of him. I mean, my God, all your expertise. So here's the deal, folks, our stuff's old. To put it in very simple terms, it's very, very old, and it's expensive to fix. You know, we faced the same exact problem with our roads, and we chose to go down a sales tax route to try and solve those problems, as opposed to raising the mill levy. And folks have generally supported us going out and fixing the roads. So, you know, this is the same, essentially the same boat we're in now, we've just chosen a different method to pay for it, in that we've got to get out there and fix that. You know, I would encourage folks in the public, if they have an idea on how to fund it that is not a rate increase, let us know. I mean, if they want to do another sales tax initiative, that's, you know, fine by me. But at the end of the day, we have to have more revenue to cover repairing this stuff. You know, half of it is revenue, and half of it is being more efficient with our staff, and we've done a lot of work on the more efficient with staff, to the point where if we don't inject more capital, the staff can't continue to be more efficient and fix more things, because we won't have the money to buy the pipe that they're putting in the ground. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler brought some knowledge.
I don't know if this is knowledge, but another way to look at it, this is really a symptom of a city that's not growing. And if you think about utilities, we had an action earlier tonight with the subdivision, the developer pays for all the infrastructure. The city, or in this case, the county, collects the utilities, utility fees from that development. So if a city's growing, it's kind of like a pyramid scheme. You know, you're adding infrastructure, you're not paying for it, but you're collecting utility fees. We're not growing, and as Councilman Jensen so eloquently put it, stuff's getting old, somebody's got to pay for it. And we don't have that growth to sustain a lot of what we're doing. Thanks.
Yes, we do have two individuals signed up for public comment, and we can continue the discussion later on with our expert from Black and Beach. The first person signed up to speak is Mr. Tim Zarowski.
Good job. Did a great job, man.
Tim Zarowski. Nobody wants increase. One of my first thoughts, top of my list, was what Councilman Dobler just went through, is we don't have the growth. So you have all these expenses, you have all this infrastructure that's failing because it's so old, but we don't have people coming in. Several years ago, we paid, I think it was $80,000 or so for a report, I think it was a gardener report, if I recall. Did it, did we do anything? Do we implement anything from that recommendation? Did we? I'm sorry, I'm not really all-in to government and what's going on with the city. But I know one of the major problems is that we don't have growth. We've got to address that issue. You know, a city's got a lot of needs. You've got the roads, and it goes on and on, right? You deal with it every day. But the problem is, people are leaving. They're not coming in. They're not coming here to spend money and live here. They're saying, how fast can I get out of this town? And that's an issue. We have to deal with that issue. That's core. We have to find a way to get past that and get growth. Once we get growth, then revenue will come, then we'll have money for all these other things. I've got a lot to say about it, but quite frankly, Anna White, you know, she's done her homework, that group, they've done a great job, they've brought a lot of things to our attention. I applaud you all for recognizing the fact that we have a need, and getting on it. It's important, you're doing a great job. Core, core is growth. Got to find a way for growth. Bring the money in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next person signed up to speak on this issue is Mr. Joseph Ledbetter. Our very own Joseph Ledbetter.
I want to get that extra four minutes back. One of my sons, who told me he was thinking about moving to Lawrence the other day, and he's got the money to move, he can do it. He lives over in Oakley, he's tired of his water not working, he's tired of his kids, I think they had yellow water for three days, maybe it was four days, just as fall. He said, I'm tired of it. I don't have to put up this. I can go to a city where they actually have water that works. But, he also said, because he regulates banks, he said, I was talking to him about the amount of revenue bonds we're starting to borrow, he said, that's only done in cities that are growing. And I'm looking at exponential growth of the revenue bonds that we're borrowing, and I don't have all the numbers, because I don't have the time, you know? I can make some more time, but I tell you, we are borrowing exponential amounts of money in revenue bonds, and I want the numbers. And I've sent you all an email, there's some things I want to know. One of the things that you do when you're problem-solving is to find the problem. It's not just, we have aging infrastructure, it's, how are we going to fix it? And I'm not hearing anything in these PowerPoints about the amount of miles of pipes we're going to fix, the different sizes of pipes. I know that we have about 600 miles of distribution pipes, which are cheaper to fix, but those are the kinds that are breaking all the time in these neighborhoods. Talked to a gentleman over in the 3,900 block of Gamwell, he's lived there 15 years, he's had 17 breaks. Each break cost this city, I've done, I've been talking to different people, worked for the city, about 2,500 bucks. They could replace that whole block with new pipe PVC that wouldn't break many years ago, with cash. Cash is king. We are not, in my opinion, running this utility the correct way. We have a lot of broken pipe, or pipe that's worn out before its time. It should be lasting 100 years, it's going out in 50, because we put the wrong kind of pipe in the ground by the so-called experts years ago. I talked to some people about that. Engineers that said unwrapped ductile pipe is just fine, when they should have been putting PVC in the ground, and we did that, I checked 240 miles of it. So that's a tremendous problem. And it's not all going to break today, and it's not all going to break tomorrow. One thing you've got on your side here, is I looked at this ordinance, we've got another year before we have to do anything. I mean, we can at least plan this thing right, and not do death by PowerPoint. And that's from General Mathis, I'm reading his book on leadership. He said, never allow yourself to be sucked into the PowerPoints. He said, ask the tough questions, make it tough, ask your troops what's going on, get out in the field and see what's going on, and actually dig into the problem. And in this case, I'm hearing more about bonds than I'm hearing about how we're going to fix the problem. I'm hearing about reserves that, to me, are ridiculous. That's not what we were taught at KU, we were taught 15% is sufficient for cities and counties, and many, many well-run cities and counties in this country operate on 15% reserves. We have had the money to fix a lot of these problems and start replacing these pipes. It costs $660,000 to replace one mile of distribution lines. We could have been doing that. I went back and looked at the numbers, because I asked a lot of questions after my son had these problems. Okay, I'm out of time.
Mr. Ledbetter, would you take an extension?
Yes, I'd like four minutes, please. Think about it.
Councilman Jensen?
We have a motion by Councilman Jensen, we have a second.
By the way, you prayed real well.
Councilman Emerson, we proceed with voting for an additional four minutes for Mr. Ledbetter.
Amen, okay. I said you prayed real well.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes, Mr. Ledbetter, you may proceed.
Thank you. Out of 300 cities that were studied, I didn't hear a listen to PowerPoints, the Water Department told me this, we were compared to 300 cities, and we were the only one that had this anomaly of 57 breaks per 100 miles annually. That was approximate number. Compared to the average of these other cities, was 17 breaks. I didn't hear that in the report. Why I'm giving you these statistics is because we have not defined the problem. And until we define the problem thoroughly, that means go really deep into what is going on with our utility system, specifically the water. That's where I see the problems. We cannot possibly solve this problem in the right way. We will say, like we did three years ago, let's increase the amount of revenue, 6% a year, is what they voted on. I remember coming down here and saying, where are the statistics? Where is the agreement in writing that you're going to replace new miles of pipes? It was nowhere. I said, you're not going to get any. So one of the numbers I asked them to produce for me was, how many miles of pipe are we replacing every year? Because I knew it was about three. It's been about three forever, except back when they got rid of the rusty water problem. Then we did about 10 miles a year, and it was a pretty successful cleanup of those problems over four years. So one of the years, they only did two and a half miles. So what they're doing is, basically, they're replacing water lines under streets of where we're doing. Well, that makes sense. Anybody would figure that out. I mean, even us lawn engineers would know to do that. But where was the money being spent additionally for that increase? Well, I started talking to some of the past people that worked for the Water Department, and they said they've been charging an awful lot of money to revenue bonds, and really spending a lot of money on commissions, and points, and all the financing things that go on with bonds. And it's almost, this was this person's opinion, it's almost like it's a charge card for your groceries. So you just keep charging it and charging it, and this is going eventually to just spin out of control. Way too much debt. And what I'm saying tonight is, stop borrowing. Stop it, turn it off. Make this thing operate operationally on cash, get these reserves to work in new water lines, so we don't have all these breaks, which are driving up our costs. It's all connected, folks. You're not going to get it on a PowerPoint presentation, you're going to have to ask the tough questions of staff, and actually get out in the field and see what's going on, and our labor costs are too high. We need to do more privatization of these repairs. Now, one of the things I suggested to Parks and Rec when the county took it over several years back, and this before I was on the advisory, I said, cut a lot of your costs by privatizing your mowing. They've been doing that. Half your parks are mowed by private contractors, and those parks look really good. I know which ones are done by the private contractors. And they have saved a lot of money by doing that. You can privatize, get more contractors involved doing these repairs, quit paying this outlandish overtime that you were paying. I went back and looked, in 2013, one of the guys was here with the bargaining unit this summer, when they were griping about they didn't want a second shift. I looked up an article, he'd been paid $162,000 that year, in 2013. And guess what? All that overtime, we got to pay retirement off that overtime. That's how that was figured. You think he knew about it? Oh, yeah. He knew that. He wasn't dumb. But we, the ratepayers, are dumb, because we keep putting up with this. We are not asking the tough questions, how to solve the problem. In this book by Mathis, he says that, there was a quote by Einstein, I thought it was remarkable, and Einstein was asked, if the world is going to end, and you had the power to fix it, and you had one hour to do it, how would you divide your time? And I have to believe Einstein, as smart as he was, he just said it right, right like this. He said, I would spend 55 minutes defining the problem, and five minutes fixing it. We're not spending enough time by going through a PowerPoint presentation and asking a few questions to solve this problem, and understand how deep it is. We have got to go deep. We need to spend probably the next six months, not just one, you know, public hearing over at the library on December 5th, where we've got one hour and a half, and I hope that the staff doesn't take up all the time, and lets a public talk. But we should be notifying research, we should be notifying Mars, we should be notifying Parks and Rec, and all of these entities, and all the churches, and the microbreweries, everybody that's involved in using water, what do you think? What do you want? And getting their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Ledbetter. At this point in time, if there's additional discussion from the body on this issue, Councilwoman Hiller?
Last week, when this came up, and I know we've had some comments too, people were worried about the lowest-income residential users, and the low users, as well as industrial users. And our presenter just talked about the rate schedule remaining the same, but there may be people on the council who don't know exactly how that was set up, and it might be helpful for us to be able to answer questions, if we could at least talk about that minimal-user residential, and what the industrial rates are like.
Mr. Copley's coming up.
Councilwoman Hiller, I'm not sure I quite understand your question. Did you want to go over what the actual financial impact is on the 1,500 gallon a month customer? To go back through that information? Or do you want me to provide information as to our utility rate rebate program?
No, it had to do with whether they're paying the same, when we did this the last time, there was a great deal of concern about our industrial users, and about that minimum residential user, to lessen the burden of the bill overall, as well as any rate increases on those folks. And we've had those issues raised already, again, if I recall correctly, we, in setting up that tiering of the rates, we set up a favorable minimum rate to protect that low-income or low-user residential. And we also really negotiated the industrial rates, and they were favorable about that, and our rates are favorable, and also that the industrial users are expecting this increase that they knew it was coming. That's what I was trying to get at.
Councilwoman Hiller, with related to that, if you look at Slide 25, which shows the water proposed retail rates, it breaks it out, both the service charge related to a person with a 1-inch meter, 1 and 1/2-inch meter, 2-inch meter, which is your base charge that each person's paid. And then below, it shows what the volume charge per 1,000 gallons is, which should tell an individual based on their small use, or their larger amount of use, what their corresponding charges are, percentage compared to a commercial user or industrial user. So that is available, it shows it there, to be able to show what the difference in impact is, based on your base user.
Just wanted everybody to know whether it was tiered with some favoring for them or not. I think it was last time. Those are the kinds of questions we get on the street, is what happens to this person who's a minimum user? So if what you're doing is directing the council to use Page 25, or Page 28?
That's what I have available at this point, to be able to show what the changes would be for that individual. You have anything to add, Braxton?
Yes, we'll provide a summary. Basically, the issue was, back in 2014, we used to have, as a minimum, 1,500 gallons had to be consumed. Whether you used it or not, you had, that was part of your bill, and basically what we did was, we changed the paradigm, and went to a base charge, the make-ready charge, plus consumption. And we can provide a summary of that.
Thanks. That's what I was going after, just to refresh everybody on it, so we knew. Thanks.
Councilman Dobler?
Two quick questions for Braxton, before he gets back to the seat.
Two, the first time you said them.
One is, do we have a program that looks at the number of breaks in a block, or two-block area, and looks at replacement?
Yeah, absolutely. We've got a couple of different things. First of all, we have a, through our City Works, Art GIS, the TSG staff has developed a break tracker tool for us. It's what we used last year when we were identifying projects based on high break history. Colley Creek is a good example of that. Since then, we've actually taken it up another notch. We have a new program that I was able to showcase to the governing body last quarterly report. It's the Fracta software, and it basically does an analysis based on a likelihood of failure, as well as a consequence of failure. And that is another great tool for us to be able to look at. Joe Ledbetter had mentioned the Oakley Street. Well, that's one that we identified, that you guys saw in my quarterly report earlier today, from 18th to 21st, where we had a very high likelihood of failure on that. That's one that we're in design on. The other street, and I draw a blank on it, Gamwell, that's another one that we have in design right now, and that was, again, based on using the tools that we have available to make good data-driven decisions, in terms of high break history, high likelihood of failure, we need to replace those. Thank you.
Thanks, Braxton. The other question, you touched on it briefly, but there is a rebate program for people that maybe struggle paying their utility bills?
Yeah, we actually have, thank you, and we have, there are two different programs. One is the Watershare Program, that's where we encourage donations on the water bill for people to make that. That's for a acute emergency need, so we have three social service agencies that administer the fund on that. Last year, or I should say, this year to date, we've attracted $14,000 on that. So if you're, you can't make your bill payment, you would have the ability to apply for funds on that. And then the workhorse of our program, which is about $120,000 a year, which is our utility rate rebate program, that's funded out of revenue from the city of Topeka. It's administered by a third party. Basically, if you qualify for the homestead refund, you would be eligible for this, and effectively, it's approximately a 18.5% rebate over what you have paid gets refunded back to you through this program. So those are, I mean, we hear what you're saying. We understand that there are people with very limited funds. We understand that there are people with very limited funds that are our customers. We understand that, and that's why we have developed these two programs and will continue to use these programs to provide some relief.
Great discussion. This will be brought back in front of the body. Two weeks?
The 10.
The 10. So make sure that, yes, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, if I may, to extend the meeting, to make a motion to finish the meeting before our time runs out, to finish our agenda, please.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion to drop the 10 o'clock meeting expiration. We have a second by Councilman Emerson. We now proceed with the vote.
I have 10, yes.
Ten having voting, yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, we move on to the public comment section of the meeting. We have one individual signed up for public comment, and that is David Jackson.
I return this evening to provide you a little bit of an update on the demolition order from last week. Yesterday, finally, after six days, I've received word from City Manager Trout that he was going to allow the hearing process to go forward instead of providing me the opportunity to move forward to achieve the Kansas Historic District designation. So at this point, three weeks into the, after this hearing notice, that's three weeks I've wasted, or been wasted, that I couldn't go forward. At this point, I would have had the first draft to the Kansas Historic District, but be that as it may. One of the hallmarks of a successful leader is to receive accurate, reliable information as a basis for a decision. Fortunately, this didn't happen. Mr. Trout relied on someone who doesn't fully understand the process. Incorrect information he received was that 60% of the owners have to support the state designation, and that we don't have that support in Noto, the 800, 900 block. The 60% requirement is not necessary if I'm doing the, submitting the application on my own. That's not necessary. And I will be doing that with the assistance of Brian Falk and Curtis Sneeth, and two architects who own in that area and support it, the 60% of the owners. And that 60% of the owners don't support it is not known. I've only personally met three of the 37 owners that don't support it, so that's a falsehood. Then, Mr. Trout also said he wasn't, he wasn't sure that he had the authority to delay this order, or that he wouldn't, one of the two. But if a CEO doesn't have the authority, what kind of leadership does this city really have? As you can tell, I'm kind of wrought up about it. I'm asking each of the city council members individually to call the city manager's office tomorrow to request the delay so we can move forward and that the city not destroy a significant historic structure in Noto, the Noto Arts District. I believe that if six of you did so, or seven, that the city attorney under the direction from Mr. Trout could delay or set aside that order, and we could get started on the historic designation. There's so much needed for North Topeka. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Deputy Mayor.
How long do you think that, how long of a delay would you need?
Well, you guys can easily check with Tim Paris because he's upstairs, he's in support of this, very much so, but he says it would take nine months at best. And he's taken the city through some of these. He's done it himself. He knows how to do it, and he'll be helping me. But it's going to take nine months to get to that point.
So you're asking for, so then at the end of nine months, you'd either get it or you wouldn't, and you'd either go forward, or we would go forward?
Okay. The city, yeah.
Correct.
The state has absolutely assured us that that area, and the city itself has done the initial survey, will qualify. There's no question about it. It's just a matter of time to get the paperwork submitted, to give their staff the 90 days that they need to review the thing. It'll take two or three drafts. Like I said, the first one probably would have been submitted by this time since I was working on it when this order came. But it'll take several drafts, and then they have to look at it some more, and then they have to schedule it for the next quarterly meeting of the Kansas State Historic Board for them to approve it. After that, then, I would have to, if, once it's approved, then I have the ability to submit a plan of action to, I would have a plan of action so that it would qualify for the state historic tax credits to make this viable project. That's what's holding us up, is the tax credits that come to make this project economically feasible.
Can I ask you why you didn't do that two or three years ago when you...
Well, yeah, and you and I talked about it. I did do it for my building, but that building, because it'd been ignored for the 15 years we talked about last week, there was not enough of it left by itself to qualify for the historic designation. But within a district, it does. So I took that process once, which, you know, took up about six months of my time to find out that it didn't qualify. I've taken other routes all through. We've had two engineering reviews done to make sure that the building is not unsafe, and we've, and then we went down a path where I thought we had an investor to build a rock-climbing facility within, and the pickleball courts, but that fell through. So those are the things I've been doing in the three years that we've owned, plus, of course, run a business. Anyway, that's, in any event, I've retained an attorney, or we'll meet with one tomorrow to take care of this, but that just means, brings more delay to the process. And I think you have the ability to put this off. And I know you can't do anything about it tonight. This is just communication, but I just would appreciate your understanding.
Thank you for your comments. At this point in time, we move on to the announcements. If the clerk would read.
No, still the mayor, next.
City Manager.
Thank you. I'll make this brief. I have no intention to push Mr. Jackson to demolish his building anytime soon. We have an issue that's been going on for almost four years related to his property. We have asked and had hearings multiple times in order to address this, and it has basically resulted to the point now where the last hearing resulted in demolition order. That's an important piece of property in the middle of Noto. I'd like to find a solution, and I continue, will continue to work with Mr. Jackson in order to do so. But this has gone on for a very long time, and that's why we're at the point that we are. So I have no intention and will not be giving any order to demolish once the timeline has been placed on. He needs to file his appeal, which is his right, but even if he was not accepted his appeal, I don't intend to move forward with this. To have a hole, as I stood in Redbud Park and looked over at his property, and to have the idea of a hole where that building is located is not something that's better for Noto. We need to find a solution, and we'll work through it.
Thank you, City Manager. We're in announcements, but, but actually, yeah, you're first, so there you go. Councilman Lesser, perfect time for you to bring your comments. I'm even skipping myself.
I got a question I had as in regards to the tax credits. I'm curious what that would be. I can get that information from Mr. Paris. He can fill us in on that. I can't quote it right now, and I did make a misquote to Mr. Jackson, but corrected it. I'm not the most familiar with this and do need to talk to Mr. Paris.
That's all I have.
Additional comments? For announcements, Councilwoman Hiller?
Okay, bumping along here. Related to that, I hope that we, I touched on it briefly earlier, but historic buildings, especially ones that have been neglected, and we have a few, not many, they take time, whether it's a private owner or whether it's a nonprofit owner. When we all think about how long Constitution Hall took, how we looked at Van Buren School, and the staff at one point thought it should come down, it's now sitting because they're waiting for tax credits. To layer the financing that it takes to do that takes time, so I do hope we can, correspondingly with this particular event, look at adding the historic preservation language to our code, which there are standards for doing that. So, speaking of committee work, though, I want to give kudos in advance to Councilwoman Ortiz, and we have a chance to do it again, but the Public Health and Safety Committee did finally make a recommendation on the camping ordinance, and it was generally supported by all involved after months of work, so got one coming along, and good work in managing all that, I think, and the staff did a great job, too. Other than that, just happy holidays to everybody. Good grief, it's almost Thanksgiving, and there'll be Thanksgiving and the various parades and events in downtown in Noto, and Festival of Trees and all sorts of things before we meet again. First of the Nutcrackers, I think, is coming up, too, so enjoy, have a safe and happy holidays.
Deputy Mayor.
I was excited to tour Fire Station Number Three today to see the upgrade, and close to look like Chicago Fire Station, close. And I look forward to more being renovated and looking nice, and happy holidays.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. Happy holidays. It was good, I, too, went over to Station Three, and it looks so, so different, but we finally took care of our stepchildren there. I wanted to shout out to Topeka High Trojans football team. Topeka High Trojans football team. Mr. Emerson, I'll get you a schedule.
I appreciate that.
Maybe you have a passport.
But anyway, I'm pretty proud of them, so hopefully we can go further, and then I can come back and let Mr. Henderson know. Thank you, Cam, for that shout out on the Public Health and Safety Committee. City Manager, I told him, please make sure this gets on before the end of the year, and he said he would. There was Councilwoman Padilla that came back and kind of put the whip on me and said, "We've got to do this today and moving forward because I'm not coming back," so might give them, tell them thank you for just pushing me that little, that little extra mile. Thank you.
I'll just say to everybody, this is, the season is upon us, and these seasons, albeit very happy for some individuals, are extremely difficult for others. So have some compassion, open your heart to individuals that you know are struggling. Make sure that you have, if you celebrate Thanksgiving, that you have extra turkey for people. And if you're celebrating any of the holidays for Christmas or any other celebration that you may have, just make sure that you just invite others. So to all of you in this team, I want to wish you a happy Thanksgiving, because I know that all of you celebrate Thanksgiving, and just enjoy working with you guys. And yes, Station 13, Station Three, that's a Freudian slip. Station Three looks amazing. And for those of you who weren't watching, when Councilwoman Ortiz talked about T.I. High, I kind of went like this. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you.
Who?
Ms. Hattfield, if you could please, I have the honor this past Thursday night of going back to my alma mater, Hawn Park, and giving the, and giving the address to the, maybe, there we go, giving the address to the National Art Society induction. And go ahead and say it, Ms. Ortiz, it's great to be a Scot. You know, I mean, beautiful kids, and I mean, my gosh, what a fantastic thing, so.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you. Again, like you has already been said, happy holidays. I had the opportunity to go down for the Salvation Army Red Kettle Kickoff, and I think it was a good event. I would encourage everybody to do what they can to help the kettle meet its goal. I had the honor of serving on their board for some years, and I do know that they really make every dollar stretch, and they are doing the most good with what they have. They have a new captain down there, Captain Lopez, and he's really committed to getting some things done. I'm working with him, and some of his staff to trying to bring a program to the Salvation Army. So anything you can do, to offer a few coins, a dollar bill when you're leaving the store and that kettle's out there, please consider donating to the Red Kettle for the Salvation Army, and thank you all.
Councilman Jensen.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. This is one of the biggest travel seasons of the year, so please be safe. In my dad life, I discovered something new that is completely horrifying and strange: pureed turkey. That's what the boys having next week. Oh, my, it's strange.
Councilman Dobler.
Just wait a few years, you'll be having it again. Yeah, happy, happy holidays. I just want to take two minutes. I had the pleasure yesterday of touring the Capper Foundation. It's been a few years since I've been there, and I'm always amazed at the work they do, and for this community to have an institution like that is pretty outstanding, so kudos to them. Thank you.
Councilman Paul. All right. Councilwoman Hiller forgets one.
I did. And Redbud Park opening last Saturday was just phenomenal, and if people haven't been there, there'll be plenty of opportunities to go. It was a big crowd. They had the people that were involved in developing it, and of course, the Noto people there, but it's a place that I would say, you just go and it feels right. It just plain feels right. They did a great job, so I didn't want to forget them. Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, we are done with the announcements, and we do have three executive sessions. Woo-hoo! So if the city attorney will read the parameters for the first one.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss the acquisition of real property necessary for the Wanamaker Forest Main Project and related to 19 Northwest Grove in addition to one other additional property as justified by KSA 75-43, 19B6. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Utilities Deputy Director Braxton Copley, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes in the governing body chambers.
We have heard the parameters of the executive session. Do we have a motion?
Uh-oh.
We have a motion by Councilman Jensen, we have a second by Councilman Emerson. We proceed by voting. In the process of the votes, we will allow for the room to become emptied.
Ms. Hiller. So you've got... I have 10, yes.
Ten having voting, yes, the motion passes. At this point in time, the room will be vacant, and we will start with our executive session shortly.
Yeah, it'll put it up there.
Okay, I turned off the mic. So same parameters?
Same.
We have recessed the executive session, and we need to go back under the same parameters at this point in time. This time, we would extend the session for an additional 10 minutes. No action is expected to be taken. The parameters are the same.
So move. Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now recess into executive session. We have concluded the executive session. There is no action taken during the executive session discussion. We are leading to reconvene into a second executive session if the city attorney could read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel... 10 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privilege matters regarding litigation involving the city as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Chief of Litigation Shelley Starr, Administrative and Financial Services Director Jessica Lamentola, and myself. No action is anticipated to be taken when the open meeting resumes and the governing body changes.
We have heard the parameters of the executive session. Do we have a motion to enter into the session? We have a motion by Councilman Dobler, a second by Councilman Jensen. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now recess into executive session, not to exceed 10 minutes. Where we have adjourned the executive session, no action has been taken. There is a need to enter into a third executive session. If the city attorney would read the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of time not to exceed 10 minutes for consultation for a non-elected personnel matter as justified by KSA 75-4319B1. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body and Human Resources Director Jackie Russell.
We have heard the parameters of the executive session. Do we have a motion to enter into it? We have a motion by Deputy Mayor, a second by Councilwoman Ortiz. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We now recess into executive session. Not fair. The executive session has culminated. No action has been taken. At this point in time, there is no further items on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.